This is the regular scheduled meeting for the month of December. It's normally held on the first Tuesday, but due to the, we changed the meeting to tonight. And of course, we're still having it virtually due to the pandemic. But this time I'd like to call and roll Councilman Vice Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Councilman Flowers.
Yeah.
Councilman Wetzel.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that we have a quorum present. This time I'd like to ask Vice Chairman Taylor, if he will, to give the invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Your Lord, our God, we do thank you for all of your manifold grace that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for Collington County, South Carolina. We thank you for this Collington County Council, Lord, the business for which we have set to meet tonight, that your grace would overshadow our hearts and minds, that we be prudent in decision making. Lord, we would do things that would be to the betterment of this community, this county. Lord, thank you for our staff. Thank you for everyone who works with and in the county. Thank you for the citizens and the people who come and work here, those who resort here. Lord, we just want to thank you for your grace in our life. Lord, we ask just a special comfort for those that are mourning through all the things that have happened this year. But we pray your peace would reign in Collington County, and we give your name the praise forever in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Taylor. I'd like to welcome everyone who's online this evening, if anybody's participating by phone. Before we get started tonight, I've been told we have one council member who's celebrating a birthday today, Councilman Flowers.
Oh, happy birthday, Dr. Flowers. Always keep to have another one.
Yeah, birthdays are something always good to have. So we want to wish you the happiest of birthdays. I'm not going to ask you to tell what number it is, but we wish you a happy birthday. This time we'll move on for item four on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 10th.
Move and approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us then to awards and recognitions. We don't have any this evening. Item six on our agenda is appearances and public presentations. We have Ms. Mary Ann Blake, who is the Vice Chairman of the Voter Registration and Election Commission, who's online with us this evening. She wants to address some issues with the voter registration office and I think some storage and space issues. So Ms. Blake, I see you online. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, sir, I sure can. Thank you so much, Councilman, for allowing me to be here to address an issue that is near and dear to my heart. I have served on the Elections Commission since 2017, and I have become aware of the fact that we need a building. We need a large building, large enough to accommodate our two staff members. We've got two full-time staff members, Angela Upchurch and Cynthia. And we've got this fabulous new voting equipment that I'm sure that all of y'all saw during our recent presidential election. A million dollars, if not more, worth of new voting equipment that we are just having to store right now in the lobby of our present headquarters building, which here is at PRTC headquarters. Now, we do have a lease agreement that we have executed or going to execute in the very near future over at the administrative building where PRTC is, but that is just to house the equipment. It is not adequate over there. It will be for a short time period. But with any of the elections, we need to have our staff and our equipment all at the same location where that we can get the equipment up and running, test it, make sure that it is properly running correctly for all of the elections, and so that the elections can be carried out smoothly. I think our election staff has, and our volunteers have all done an excellent job with all of this. But we've got to keep all of that underway for Collington County. Now, right now, I'm out here at the PRTC building. We were having to store our equipment down the hallway and upstairs in one of the office rooms, which now is going to be rented out. And that is the reason why we had to go and get extra storage. Ideally, what we would have would be one location building that would have bay doors, such as the old Ford building downtown Walterboro. That is just one example of a building, building type that could be purchased and renovated, or we could even build the building on county land. But we need bay doors where that when we have the equipment taken out to the locations, we can bring that equipment back. It can be unloaded and, you know, reloaded on, unloaded on to the U-Haul vehicles that we have at that time. And to just keep everything properly secure, and that is our proposal to council. We would request your help in either getting a building that we can refurbish and redo to house our election staff, have room enough for our volunteers during election time, and also have all of our equipment at the same location so that we can make the elections run smoothly for Collington County. Either build the building or purchase a building and have it renovated. And at this time, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the councilmen would have.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann. Any council members have any questions or comments? Ms. Blake?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, for Ms. Blake. Ms. Blake, how many square foot are you, how many square feet are you talking about?
Let me just defer to, sir, are you, how many square feet that we would potentially need or that we're using now?
Yes, 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 that you would potentially need.
I would, we need, in my viewpoint, I think we need at least a 3,000 square feet to make everything work smoothly, at least that amount of square feet.
Is that an estimation or guesstimation?
That is, well.
We won't hold you to that. We won't hold you to that.
Please don't. We're just now beginning our talking here.
Okay, okay, I understand.
In my, in my best guess, taking the square footage of the space that we have here at PRTC Headquarters Building that we're occupying right now, and taking the square footage of the leased building that we're using for storage space, putting those two together, I think it comes out to around 3,000 square feet. So you put all that together, that is the bare minimum that we can get away with. But honestly, it really needs to be more than that. It needs to be around 5,000 square feet. And again, with the bay doors where that we can safely and efficiently unload and reload the equipment on election days from the vehicles.
Thank you, Ms. Blake.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Chairman, certainly. Thank you, Ms. Blake, for coming tonight and making the presentation. You have a pretty good southern drawl. I love it.
Yes, yes, I do. And that southern roll is Tennessee, and I don't know, it follows me everywhere I go. So here I am with it right here, so.
Yeah, quick question, maybe two. One is in relation to when is the next time that you feel like the staff will need use of the machines where they'll have to upload all of them or something? When is the next time that that will come up?
Okay, our next big election will be the 2022 elections. So we need to have something in place and up and ready to go by that time.
Okay, and then I think my next question, well, let me, let me stop there. I think that'll work, work with that. Thank you so much, Ms. Blake. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, any other council members? I know we have a issue, an item on our agenda tonight, we'll partially address that. But this is probably an issue that we can take up. We, we're still planning, we're trying to have a council retreat, if you will. You know, obviously COVID impacts that, but we, this could be an item that may need to make its way on the agenda for that, that particular meeting. So if there's no other comments, Ms. Blake, I know you got another item on here later, but we're going to move on down the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. This time then we'll go to item seven, which is the administrative briefing. Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Chairman, Council, good evening. I just have a few items for you. First of all, I wanted to inform you that our annual Christmas luncheon will be next Saturday, excuse me, next Tuesday, December 15th. We will be following COVID protocol with this, so it will be a takeout luncheon. But if any of you want to participate in some sort of way, please feel free to give us a call, and we will see how we can make that work out. Couple items on the agenda tonight. We do a little bit unorthodox. We have two ordinances on here for second reading and public hearing. That is in regards to the Bar Marine Fee in lieu of Tax Agreement for a new industry there, or industry expansion there, sorry, as well as our multi-county park agreement with Charleston County, in which we are the donor county. Both of those needed to be approved by the end of the year. And at the time we were scheduling this, we weren't sure when we can get the third reading meeting together. That meeting is now in schedule for next Wednesday at 1:00 PM. You can either join the meeting via Zoom, or you can call in. We will send that information out later this week. Shouldn't take more than about 10 or 15 minutes at the most to get those accomplished. Also, to follow up on Ms. Blake, we, I am grateful to come at a rural telephone company. If you, I'm sure all of you have seen the voting machines by now, but I think they take up about five times as much space as the previous machines. Somewhat tough to move around. We worked through, fortunately, been able to put together a good bit of staff, even from our summer feeding programs, facilities. Ms. Angel has been great to work with on getting all that. I don't know how she's coordinated it all, to be honest with you, getting all those big machines moved around. But I want to thank PRTC. They did have those machines throughout the building. Was able, week before last, to sit down with Jason and his staff and work out a amenable price for the additional space that they had. That agreement that you have on the agenda tonight will be a two-year agreement. Our thinking was with that two years, that would get us to the next election cycle, as well as give us sufficient time to plan what will be a pretty large building or how we do that. We do have a lease both on the current space they're in now, as well as the new, actually, the new lease that they will be going into with storage. One of the grants that we got here in the last month or so will pay for that, that portion of storage for the next two years. So that will cover us there. And then we do have a significant lease that we're paying on the space now that we may could put towards debt service or looking at some other options for their space as well. Other than that, I'll be glad to take any questions at this time. That's all I have for you.
Any questions of council? Okay, hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, I have one while, while the administrator is available, and we're talking about building and spaces. Or, or, Mr. Administrator, or what progress, what has been made toward accommodating the, the folks at the delegation office for moving from, from the back part of that building for safety reasons to the front part where it's vacant by the chamber?
Yes, sir. We had some conversations on that today, and we were, I believe we've got that worked out. We just need, you know, we just need them to move completely out of the space they're in now so we could use that for another office. And we're working through those. Should have that worked out by the end of the week.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Okay, any other questions of the administrator? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to automate on the agenda, public hearing. Is there a motion we go into public hearing?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We're now in public hearing. In public hearing, we have item A ordinance 20-0-02, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and among Collington County and Bar Marine Group LLC and James W. Williams, whereby Collington County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes agreement, or excuse me, arrangement with Bar Marine Group LLC and James W. Williams, providing for payment by Bar Marine Group LLC and James W. Williams of certain fees in lieu of abhorrent taxes, providing for certain special source revenue or infrastructure credits to further amend the multi-county industrial/business park agreement between Collington County, South Carolina, and Charleston County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial/business park, so as to include additional property in Collington County as part of the park, providing for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes paid by Bar Marine Group LLC and James W. Williams under the agreement for establishment of a multi-county industrial/business park and other matters related thereto. Is there anybody who would like to address this ordinance? Or have we received any, Mr. Administrator, have we received any comments or anything regarding either one of these ordinances?
Sir, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, all right, hearing none, we'll go to, excuse me, item B ordinance 20-0-09, to ratify fiscal year 20 grant and budget resolutions and related appropriations for all funds, to ratify transfer and other resolutions previously authorized by council and other matters related thereto. Is there anyone who would like to address this particular ordinance? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to item C, ordinance 20-0-10, to establish pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the Code of laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, a multi-county industrial/business park in conjunction with Charleston County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Charleston County as to the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park among taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park to provide for a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxation and other matters related thereto. Is there anyone who would like to address this particular ordinance?
Okay, we can confirm that there's no emails or comments sent by email.
Okay. Mr. Griffin, do we have any, any comments, questions, or anything that's been received?
No, there aren't any.
Okay, thank you. All right, hearing none, is there a motion that we close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item nine, old business. Item A, second reading ordinance 20-0-02, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and among Collington County and Bar Marine Group LLC and James W. Williams, whereby Collington County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with Bar Marine Group LLC and James W. Williams, providing for the payment by Bar Marine Group LLC and James W. Williams of certain fees in lieu of abhorrent taxes, providing for certain special source revenue or infrastructure credits to further amend the multi-county industrial business park agreement between Collington County, South Carolina, and Charleston County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial/business park, so as to include additional property in Collington County as part of the park, providing for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes paid by Bar Marine Group LLC and James W. Williams under the agreement for establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other matters relating thereto.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Item B, third reading ordinance 20-0-09, to ratify fiscal year 20 grant and budget resolutions and related appropriations for all funds, to ratify transfer and other resolutions previously authorized by council and other matters related thereto.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item C, second reading ordinance 20-0-10, to establish pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the Code of laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, a multi-county industrial/business park in conjunction with Charleston County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Charleston County as to the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park among taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park to provide for a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxation and other matters related thereto.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item 10 on the agenda, new business. Item A, resolution 20-R-54, to authorize the execution of a lease agreement by and between Collington County and Palmetto Rural Telephone Cooperative, Inc., for storage space located at 266 Robertson Boulevard for the voter registration and elections office.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item B, resolution 20-R-55, to authorize acceptance and budgeting of various grants for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
So move.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the motion, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item C, resolution 20-R-56, to approve the enterprise service agreement between Collington County and Palmetto Rural Telephone Cooperative.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Item D, resolution 20-R-57, to award contract in the courts with the bid CC-32 for demolition and disposal of the Floyd Buckner Building.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item 11 on our agenda, council time. At this time, does any members of council have any, any items they would like to bring before council or any comments?
Chairman, I'd like to wish everybody a happy, a merry Christmas and hope everybody has a very safe holiday season.
Any other comments?
I concur.
I concur.
Okay, I concur.
Oh, one, I would have a comment, Mr. Chair. One of the things that I would like to say is that I am concerned with the, with the frequency of our meetings. I know we don't meet just to meet, but I think certainly once a month is not asking too much for us to meet at a regular scheduled meeting, simply because our, when we don't meet on a regular schedule, regular scheduled times, there are times when others have other meetings planned. Now, I treat council as a priority. So if I have another meeting, of course, I'm going to cancel it out, but it's not fair to any other board that I sit on if I have to cancel a meeting on a night that they have scheduled, and they are following their schedule, but then council not following the published schedule that we have. So I would like for us to ensure that we are following schedule. I understand during election or years when there are conflicts, but other than election Tuesdays, I don't see any reason why we can't follow our own guidelines.
Okay, I think that's a fair enough comment. Hopefully, 2021, well, you know, we can finally get 2020 in the rearview mirror. We can get back to some sense of normalcy. It may not happen right away immediately, but I do think we need to probably try to adhere to the meeting schedule, barring, you know, something like a holiday or something else that would happen. Also hope, you know, that we can really get this workshop in so that we can, I mean, there may be some, we may have to task our, our sparsely used committees. We might have.
They have voted and they are now in.
They have voted and they are now in.
Guess somebody can tell me when we get back an open session. Regarding the car drivers in the voter registration office, this time I'd like to make a motion that council approve the dispersal of the remaining one-time grant funds pursuant to the request of the voter registration and election commission related to the 2020 primary and general elections.
That's second motion.
Okay, we got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Any other motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we move a position increase in the coroner's office, a $7,000 raise to $25,000 and make the employee a whole from part-time to full-time.
Okay, you got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimous?
Mr. Chair, I'll adjourn it.
We got a motion to adjourn. Any discussion or second? Any discussion? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Everybody, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.